So when it comes time to get, I think, names again. So even there, if we have anyone, we slide them in your front. Nobody wants to sit in the front row? Good evening. Welcome to the Department of Transportation hearing on 29617. Talking about the improvements. Does anyone want to make? I don't have one. I'm closed. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much. All right, Newton Project 29617, public hearing this evening. Thanks for coming. I'm going to do a little housekeeping. My name is Paul Cottington. I work for the Department of Transportation in the Bureau of Right of Way. It's my team that put this meeting together with the help, the able help of Diane Warren from your town hall. And we couldn't have done it without you guys and her. So on behalf of the Department of Transportation and the town of Newton, I want to thank you for letting us use your wonderful facility. Speaking of which, the restrooms through that door. There's on the right-hand side, there's a unisex. And I think Diane told me downstairs, there's another two. Obviously, there's an exit over here. So if that's the way you came in, that might be the shortest way to get out if we have an emergency that I don't expect, but you never know. That's why they call them emergencies. And then the longer route out is through these doors and down and out. But otherwise, that's it. That's it. The other thing I would ask is if you have your cellphone on, would you silence it? I'm not expecting, except for-
Silence your phone.
-the counselor. She may get a call from the governor. You never know. Anyway, off with the phones. Restrooms are out the door. There are no fire alarms. So we won't know until Officer Jewett tells us to get out. All right, and he's in the back. So thank you very much for coming. And we're going to begin the hearing. So I'm going to introduce Counselor Janet Stevens, the chairperson of the commission for this project. Jan.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Thanks for everyone coming out tonight. This hearing for Newton Project number 29617 is called to order at 6:05 PM on Thursday, January 19, 2023. I'm Executive Counselor Janet Stevens of this commission, appointed by the governor and executive counsel. Chris Jacobs to my right and Representative Charles Melvin are also members of this commission. This hearing is being held pursuant to RSA 230, Section 14, and the Surface Transportation and Uniform Relocation Assistance Act of 1987, and is being recorded. The purpose of this hearing is to gather comments from the public, hear evidence of the economic, environmental, and social effects of the project and its consistency with the goals and objectives of planning as undertaken by the Department of Transportation. It is the commission's responsibility to determine, based on all information provided, if the project can go forward as proposed. It is therefore important that all individuals who want to make requests or suggestions do so during the hearing. However, I'm going to mention that we have built in 10 additional days past this event for abutters' residents to submit comments. And we'll get into greater detail, but there will be an additional nine to 10 days to do so. At this time, I would ask Timothy Dunn, project manager for DOT, to speak. He will introduce the rest of the DOT team. Then Stephen Labonte, Administrator for the Bureau of Right of Way, will speak about the process that the DOT follows after a hearing. After this, I will open the floor to those who wish to address the commission. So at this point, Mr. Dunn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Counselor Stevens, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. My name is Tim Dunn. I am the project manager for this project. And it is my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Tonight's meeting is a public hearing to present the preferred alternative for the improvements to Rose Corner, the intersection of New Hampshire 108, Amesbury Road, and Maple Avenue in the town of Newton. I would first like to introduce tonight's presenters. Rebecca Martin with the NHDOT Bureau of Environment, Steve Labonte, Administrator for the NHDOT Bureau of Right of Way, and Hans Weber, Lead Engineer with the NHDOT Bureau of Highway Design. Additional team members from the department here tonight are Dan Primo in the back and Emma Bell running the computer, both from the Bureau of Highway Design. I would also like to thank Gisela Weber, our hearings coordinator with the Bureau of Right of Way, and the team present tonight from the Bureau of Right of Way for their assistance in the hearing. We will try to be as succinct as possible in presenting the project information and anticipate our presentation will take about 30 minutes. Following the presentation, the chairperson will open the floor for your comments and questions for the record. So the project description, the project is located at Rose Corner in Newton at the intersection of New Hampshire Route 108, Amesbury Road, and Maple Avenue. The project extends approximately 175 feet north and 225 feet west along New Hampshire Route 108, 250 feet south along Amesbury Road, and 175 feet east on Maple Avenue. There's the location project and, oh, uh-oh. All right. The purpose and need, the project is classified as an intersection improvement project. The main objective of the project is to improve the intersection operation and address safety concerns. And New Hampshire Route 108, also known as North Main Street, has free-flow movement and curves sharply through the intersection, while Amesbury Road and Maple Avenue are stop-controlled at the intersection. This combination of a sharply curved free-flow movement on New Hampshire 108 and stop control of the other two roads, along with multiple slip ramps, leads to driver uncertainty at the intersection. There were 15 accidents at the intersection between 2009 and 2018. Work at Rose Corner was first evaluated by the town in 2009 and further developed in 2011. The NHDOT then completed an engineering study in 2013, and the project was added to the state's 2017 to 2026 10-year plan. Design work started in 2018, including presenting to a public officials' meeting. In the fall of 2020, the design team held a virtual public informational meeting and presented the project to the town of Newton officials. And notice of this meetings, notice of this meeting were sent to all abutters of the project. Based on the feedback we received at the meeting, the four-way stop alternative was selected as the preferred alternative. As design work progressed on the preferred alternative, the Amesbury Road culvert and Golds Hill Road intersections were added to the project. The plans we are presenting this evening are preliminary plans. In developing the preferred alternative, we attempted to limit the impacts to private property, historic properties, and natural resources within the project limits. Additional engineering work will be required to develop the specific design details needed for construction of the project. Tonight's meeting is a significant milestone in the project's development, where it transitions from the preliminary design phase to the final design phase and right-of-way procurement phase. I now ask Hans Weber from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation to explain the plan that you see on the wall and present the details of the proposed layout. Hans?
Thank you, Tim. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for having us. I'll try not to rehash too much of what Tim's already laid out, but I thought I'd start tonight by just going through on the projector screen here, talking a little bit more about the intersection. New Hampshire 108 makes up the western and northern leg. We've got Pond Street to the north, right by Rose Corner Market. And then Amesbury Road heads south towards Massachusetts. Maple Avenue moves east towards Southampton. This is an unconventional intersection. New Hampshire 108 is the through movement, 30 miles per hour design speed. People can carry right on through without necessarily needing to use their blinkers, and that is within their right, per our traffic laws. Stop condition on Amesbury Road in the PM sometimes sees queuing as people wait for safe opportunities to enter into the intersection and continue either moving north on 108 or west on 108, heading actually right here to the town hall. The slip ramps add to the confusion of the intersection layout. The yield conditions require people to look far back over their shoulder in order to make sure that they see traffic approaching them. But our largest issues that we have are with the 108 leg. That 90-degree movement is not traditional at a four-way intersection. People move through at speed. And there's sight distance concerns on the northwest parcel with the trees that are out there today, as well as the cut slope. And even the house, as you're approaching, particularly in the southbound direction, you have a hard time seeing if there's traffic opposing you on 108 that might be just continuing straight north on 108 as you're trying to cross through onto Amesbury Road, which is a movement, as we understand, happens quite a bit. People use that route to head down towards Massachusetts quite a bit. Amesbury Road sees about 3,800 vehicles per day compared to the 4,400 that we see on New Hampshire 108. So pretty equal traffic volumes despite being not the primary state route. The state does not own Amesbury Road, but we do maintain Amesbury Road. So part of the improvements we're going to talk about tonight include Amesbury Road improvements and then tying into Maple Road, which is a town-owned road. Tim mentioned the 15 crashes during a 10-year period. So we know that there's a bit of an accident history, and that's just what gets reported by the state police. There are many other close calls and maybe unreported accidents that could occur at this intersection. And it's evidenced by the town's longstanding interest to do something at this location. Out there today, the existing drainage conditions. We have wetlands to the south of the project area on both sides of Amesbury Road. There are combined wetland complex that drains from a private dam that's just off-screen here. So that drains under 108 on the western approach, continues through the wetland, and then crosses under Amesbury Road at a culvert right here, right by Golds Hill Road. Drainage sheet flows today right into those wetlands off the edge of pavement. It also collects in shallow grass ditch lines right off the edge of pavement. We see evidence of scour and degradation. So that's something we'd like to improve as part of the project. Utility poles in the area are owned by Unitil and co-owned by Consolidated Communications. Everyone who's familiar with these intersections probably aware of the, we call them pork chop islands, those little grass islands that exist on the southwest, southeast, and northeast quadrants. In that southeast quadrant, there's a cluster of utility poles that are right in the center of the intersection. We think that promotes unsafe driving conditions, and it's something that we'd like to see fixed as part of this project improvement. Additionally, there are some other utility poles that are pretty near to the roadway. Those are likely to be relocated as part of our project efforts by the utilities in order to make sure that our new layout is as safe as it can be. I've got this picture up on screen. This is looking southbound on 108 towards the intersection. I don't know how well you can see it from the audience. But as we know, the 108 movement is just continuing straight to the right here by that yellow Jeep. But a lot of people do want to pass straight through on Amesbury. And you can tell that the road is kind of starting to curve away from that movement, even though it's one of the primary movements we experience. Those single-lane right-turn slip ramps, we see evidence of a car waiting at Maple Avenue that needs to look pretty far over the shoulder to make sure they're not in conflict with anyone moving straight north, coming from Amesbury Road, or proceeding through the intersection from 108 west. And we've got the utility poles very near to the edge of pavement to our right. And then that cluster utility pole is a little hard to see, but that is in that centered grass island. So again, those are likely to move as part of, well, certainly the one in the middle of the intersection. And then other utility relocations will be part of the proposed work. Existing right-of-way out there is pretty tight. It varies between 50 and 66 feet, depending on which approach you're on. But in most instances, it's not too far beyond the edge of pavement that you see today. Part of the proposed improvement will actually shrink the overall pavement footprint of the intersection. So moving the roadway further away from the right-of-way line at the heart of the intersection. So design considerations that we set out for. We're looking to improve the safety and traffic flow of the intersection while attempting to mitigate property impacts and remaining cognizant of environmental considerations. So Tim already touched on that, and that's a lot of what our presentation is going to cover tonight. So moving over to our color plans, we do have two on the wall. I recognize they're a little further away, depending on where you're seated. They will be, we will be leaving at least one copy. So if people want to stay and look at the plans after the meeting or just return in the coming days, I think they will still be up. They're also visible on our project website if you have a computer at home. Before I start speaking to the plan, I thought we'd go over the legend real quick. Primary things that you need to see, colors from a distance. Yellow is representative of the travelway. So that's from the yellow line in the center of the road over to the white line of the shoulder. The strips of darker brown are going to be representative of the shoulder. So we are proposing to widen the shoulder as part of the work. Out there today, it varies between 0 and 3 feet. We're looking to put back a consistent five-foot shoulder, which will be good for bicyclists and provide a little bit more refuge should you need to pull over on the side of the road. Lastly, for major proposed slope work, you'll see, I'm sorry. For major proposed work, the light green coloring that you see at a distance is representative of the slope work. So whether that means fill slopes, so that's putting down some new soil in order to tie into the existing ground, or if it's a cut slope, which means cutting away a little bit at the hillsides that might be flanking the roadway in order to provide a little bit more of a widened typical and a bit more refuge on the side of the road. Existing detail, probably should have covered that first. We've got light gray, hard to see at a distance, representative of existing pavement, both the main line, so New Hampshire 108, Maple Avenue, and Amesbury Road. You also see it representing a few of the driveways adjacent to the project. You'll also see this lighter brown that's representative of gravel driveways about the roadway in the area. And then lastly, I guess I'll point out, large green blocks representative of wooded areas out there today. Our proposed slope work will clear a little bit of those trees, push it back from the roadway slightly, leaving a bit of a buffer at what we call the toe of the slope. So where our slope interfaces with the existing ground. And that's mostly for construction purposes and keeping it clear and safe. I guess I already said lastly, but I'll point out, if it's not already obvious, the red color on the plan are the buildings surrounding the intersection. So that about covers it. Moving forward with our preferred alternative, as Tim already mentioned, after convening a public informational meeting back in 2020, we have moved forward at the town's suggestion with a four-way stop alternative. I may also refer to it as an all-way stop alternative. We think this really promotes safety that you don't experience at the intersection today. That 108 movement that's, you know, at speed, unclear where vehicles might be traveling. And it makes it harder for vehicles on Maple Avenue and Amesbury Road to find safe gaps depending on the time of day. We recognize that there are AM and PM peak hours, primary commuting hours for people heading to and from work, and that's what we're mostly cognizant of. I mentioned earlier that we are going to be shrinking the overall pavement area. This is something that I think will be a little hard to see at a distance. So we've got a blown-up picture on screen. Hopefully, it's a little bit more visible. But out there today, represented by these dotted lines hidden in the green there, are the slip ramps. So you can see that the edge of pavement of what we're proposing is actually coming in from where those slip ramps are today. We'll remove those grass pork chop islands. We'll put back the new pavement tighter to the center of the intersection. And we'll remove those slip ramps as well, pulling the roadway away from those parcels in the northeast, northwest, and southeast. In order to make sure that all vehicles are accommodated for, out there today, our design vehicle is a WB62, which is one of the smaller tractor trailers. Small is maybe not the right word. We want to make sure that all vehicles that are currently traversing the intersection are still able to traverse the intersection, recognizing that those right-turn slip ramps are a bit more comfortable for a larger vehicle to traverse. So we have included as part of the proposed work these orange and checkered patterns that are identified on the legend as a raised truck apron. So the idea is that it's a three-inch mountable curb. You probably see them primarily in roundabouts. The idea being that larger vehicles can off-track, they can leave the travelway with their trailers in order to make sure that they can safely accommodate the intersection without bumping into curb or ending up off the roadway. The always-stop condition will bring everyone to a stop, whereas today they are able to travel through if they're staying on the 108 leg. But, is that me? Just apologize if it is. The always-stop condition, everyone's going to come to a stop, wait for their turn to go. It's a safer condition. It reduces speeds at the intersection. The stop bars will be positioned so that you have good sight distance to people either to your left or right or opposing you. But our traffic modeling shows we shouldn't be experiencing drastic queues on 108 as a result of this work. Everyone should be able to make it through even during the peak hours without big backups on either leg. Something else we are proposing as part of this work is to introduce a closed drainage system. So that's curb lines, catch basins, and pipes that then carry the water under the roadway surface. We're going to start the system by Pond Street, shown here. Out there today, there's a little bit of a muddy section where Pond Street interfaces with 108. We want to try and capture some of that roadway drainage right at the start and then carry that, capturing it along the curb line at those periodic catch basins and ultimately outletting it into the southeast quadrant where we will have a grass treatment swale. The water that we collect right off that pavement surface will make its way through this whale before being outletted into the town-owned conservation land that is to the southeast of the intersection. Something I want to highlight are the right-of-way implications of this project. We are not needing to acquire any permanent right-of-way. All the work that's proposed is within the existing right-of-way. But in order to make sure our maintenance crews have the room to operate should they need to go out and repair or clean out any of these structures in the future, we are talking about a couple drainage easements. And I'll talk about it a little later, a couple guard rail easements. So right at that Pond Street interface, we do have a small drainage easement we're showing in order to make sure that if they ever needed to excavate and do something with that catch basin, they'd be able to get to it without requiring, I guess, consultation. We have a little bit of pavement removal shown here. So this is for the northeast parcel. Out there today, it's paved within our right-of-way, and we are thinking that's where we're going to need to relocate one of the utility poles. So we are looking to remove the pavement at that location. I mentioned the treatment swale to the southeast. We will acquire a drainage easement, a permanent drainage easement at that location in order to make sure our crews can get out and clean that swale periodically and make sure it's doing what it needs to do to treat that water. Tim mentioned a couple other things that were pulled into the project's scope more recently. When the intersection was originally identified, we weren't necessarily going to touch what we are referring to as the Amesbury culvert. That is a culvert that crosses under Amesbury Road just north of the Golds Hill Road intersection. But we've asked our district maintenance crews if, how they feel about the culvert. And they were asked, they asked us to include it in the scope of the project for replacement. So we've got a couple pictures here. The inlet on the west sits predominantly underwater. It's an L-shaped head wall that collects town drainage from Golds Hill Road. And then it's also the primary unnamed stream that feeds from the private dam to the northwest of the project area. At the outlet side, we have a district repair head wall. So a little bit of an unconventional treatment, something we'd like to see fixed as part of the project improvement. So where what's out there today sits underwater and is in a degraded condition, we are proposing to put back a 60-inch concrete pipe with a 36-inch overflow pipe that sits slightly offset from it. So that will sit dry most of the time in the combined wetland area. But for those design year floods that we are looking at as part of our design, that 36 will help make sure that we never overtop the road, except for the worst-case conditions. Lastly, we've got the Golds Hill Road intersection. Out there today is a pretty unconventional Y intersection, and it also has a utility pole placed right at the center of the intersection that we identify as a safety hazard, something we'd like to see improved as part of this project. And working with the utility companies, they agree with us. So what we're proposing to do, and this aligns, I think, with the 2011 charrette that the town had pursued, is to actually consolidate the overall pavement area at the throat of Golds Hill Road into a more traditional T-intersection and relocate the utility outside of the paved area. So I guess I didn't cover this in my colors, but that striped green and gray that you see up there, that's indicative of removed pavement. So Golds Hill Road in general is going to be a lot narrower at the opening, but pretty consistent then with the width that it experiences the rest of the way as you move up into the west. I mentioned that we would also need some guard rail easements. That's part of the Amesbury culvert replacement. We want to make sure that people aren't going to depart the roadway and end up down in that stream bed lower than the road. So we're looking to lengthen the guard rail that's out there today protecting the culvert by Golds Hill Road. And we might need these proposed guard rail easements just to make sure that our maintenance crews can get out there and replace the end sections should they ever be struck. And I glossed over it as well, but we have drainage easements are necessary at the Golds Hill Road, oh, sorry, at the Amesbury pipe in order to make sure that, once again, our maintenance crews can get out there, keep those clean and operating well as the years go by. Recognizing that the intersection configuration is going to be quite a bit different than what's out there today, primarily the stop conditions being introduced on 108, whereas today they are the free movement, we've coordinated with our Bureau of Traffic. And their recommendation is to install for six months additional signage on the 108 approaches in order to warn drivers of the changed condition. I think the intersection will look pretty different as you approach it than what's out there today. But the additional signage will have orange flags that should grab the driver's eye and make sure that they're aware that what's coming up in front of them might be different than the last time they passed through the intersection. The daily drivers, of course, will, they'll learn pretty quick. Traffic control during construction. We're looking to maintain two-way traffic to the maximum extent practicable, recognizing that there will be need for the occasional limited one-lane alternating two-way traffic patterns. The goal is to always return it to a two-lane traffic pattern at the end of each day. So you'll never have instances of needing to go through an automated light at night that's directing one lane at a time. Everything should be short-term, flagger-facilitated, one-lane traffic. Just making sure I didn't miss anything. There's existing lighting at the heart of the intersection. There's also a light pole north of the intersection at the opposite Pond Street. That light is not owned by the department. It's a town agreement with the utility, Unitil. So the town is free to pursue that agreement continuing wherever that utility pole is relocated to. But we are not proposing lighting, permanent lighting as part of our work. And I think that covers it for now. So I'd like to hand it back over to Tim Dunn.
Thank you, Hans. I just want to touch on one thing that I thought I heard. We will have, we will be doing work outside of the right-of-way, but no permanent new right-of-way is needed for this project. As part of our evaluation of any project, the department must consider and document the environmental impacts of our proposed actions. At this time, Rebecca Martin from the NHDOT Bureau of Environment will provide a summary of the environmental aspects of the project. Rebecca?
Thanks, Tim. Good evening, members of the commission and ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for joining us tonight. Pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act, the Department of Transportation has conducted an environmental review for the project. In case that idea is new to folks, we're just going to step through what those steps look like really quickly. The first thing that we do is we review the project area for environmental resources that are present in the project area. We evaluate the proposed project alternatives against those resources that are present to see what the impacts might be. We coordinate with other agencies, including state and federal agencies, regarding the resources that are present in the project area. And then we assess the impacts of the selected alternative on the natural, cultural, and socioeconomic resources in the project area. We assist the design team with efforts to avoid, minimize, and mitigate any impacts to the resources that are present. And we prepare an environmental document at the end of all of that to summarize what we've done, the resources that are present in the project area, and how the proposed alternative might impact them. Copies of the draft environmental document that isn't finalized until after the hearing are available tonight if anybody would like one, and it will also be posted on the website. To start, Hans touched on some of the wetlands and water resources that are present in the project area. There are pleistrian emergent wetlands and forested wetlands in the project area. Less than 10,000 square feet of impacts are proposed to those wetlands. There's less than one acre of total wetland impact. So this will qualify for the Army Corps of Engineers Programmatic General Permit. That's a much easier process. We will need to apply for a Department of Environmental Services standard dredge-and-fill permit for the project. There is one unnamed stream that passes through the Amesbury Road culvert that was mentioned earlier. We will also need permitting for that. And, oh, next slide, please, sorry. Also mention the protected species that are present in the project area. We did a review for state-listed and federally listed threatened and endangered species. As far as state-listed species goes, there were no rare plants or rare natural communities present within the project area. There are protected turtle species in, adjacent to the project area that are anticipated to potentially be in the project area. And so we're coordinating with- And so we're coordinating with the New Hampshire Fish and Game Department regarding ways that we can do our best with the project not to impact those species. As for federally-listed species, the northern long-eared bat is predicted to potentially be present in the project area as there's forested habitat. And this forest-dwelling bat species can use forests throughout our state, so it could potentially be present. We have already completed coordination with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service regarding the northern long-eared bat. And we're adopting avoidance and minimization measures into the project to avoid impacts to the species to the maximum extent practical. Next slide, please. As for cultural resources, there has been extensive coordination with the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources throughout the design of this project. Through that, there was an evaluation for what resources within the project area might be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And it was determined that Rose Corner itself is actually a historical district that is eligible for the National Register. Because the proposed work will maintain the characteristics of the intersection and will not adversely affect any of the elements identified as contributing elements, it has been determined that there will be no adverse effect to this historic district. Further, there was a review for potential archaeological resources or sensitivities in the project area, and there weren't found to be any. Other environmental resources that folks might be aware of or interested in, there were many, I'll underline that many, invasive plant species within the project area. At the DOT, we have a policy about invasive plants. And so the project will include a plan to manage invasive plant species and avoid spreading them throughout the project area or outside of the project area. In addition, the department also manages what we call limited reuse soils. These are soils that are adjacent to the roadway that have low levels of contaminants in them. And we will also have a plan that we call a soils management plan to ensure that all of these soils are properly managed and hopefully reused within the project area. As for water quality, Hans mentioned that there is a stormwater swale that's planned for treatment. There will not be an increase in impervious area, so that's good news for this project. And the swale, in addition, will ensure that the stormwater coming through this project area will be better in the end when the project is done than in its present state. As for noise, this is not what qualifies as a Type 1 project according to the DOT noise policy, which means that it's not adding or significantly changing any of the lanes. And it has been determined that this project will not have any adverse impacts on noise or air quality. There is a conservation land that Hans mentioned, and the impacts proposed to that conservation area are minor. And they haven't, the conservation land has not received any funds from the Land and Water Conservation Fund or other funding that limits our ability to use land in that area. As I mentioned, there are copies of the environmental document available, and I'd be happy to answer any questions afterwards that people might have. Back to you, Tim.
Thank you, Rebecca. As this project will involve acquiring easements, Steve Labonte, Administrator for the NHDOT Bureau of Right-of-Way, will describe the process of acquiring the necessary right-of-way for the project. Steve?
Thank you, Tim. Members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen, before I go into the right-of-way procedures for this project, I would like to mention that we have with us tonight copies of a booklet entitled "Projects and Your Property", which is located, I believe we have copies over here at the table. Jennifer Adams, the woman to my left, can help you out with those. These are particularly useful for property owners who will have impacted properties by the project. I'd also like to point out that, as Counselor Stevens mentioned earlier, there is a 10-day write-in period after this, after this hearing closes tonight that you'll be able to provide written testimony, which will get the same consideration as any, any recorded testimony. It'll enter the record and get the same consideration any testimony given here tonight will. That can be sent to the chairperson of the commission, care of Peter Stamness, Director of Project Development, State of New Hampshire, Department of Transportation, PO Box 483 Concord, New Hampshire, 03302-0483. It's easier just to look at your handout, and it's located up here in the upper right-hand corner, written in red. If after the reviewing, the information and testimony presented at this hearing tonight and provided during the written write-in period, the commission finds necessity for the proposed layout, several things will happen. First, with approval to proceed with the design of this project, the department will begin preparing appraisals for each of the property rights, for each of the properties impacted by the proposed construction you see on the plans. A staff appraiser from the department or a fee appraiser from private industry will contact each owner to appraise their property. The appraisal will reflect the fair market value of the property rights needed to complete construction. Prior to starting negotiations, these appraisals are reviewed separately to see that all appraisals are accurate and have taken into account all applicable approaches to value. The value in the reviewed and finalized appraisal will be the offer of compensation used by the department as a basis for negotiations. A right-of-way agent from the department will visit each property owner and discuss each acquisition separately. This is an opportunity for the owner to ask questions and bring up concerns. If the property owner accepts the offer, conveyance documents are prepared, ownership is transferred to the state, and compensation is provided to the property owner. If negotiations between the owner and the department fail, the matter will be filed with the New Hampshire Board of Tax and Land Appeals, where the owner will have the opportunity to argue for additional compensation. Please understand this can be done with or without an attorney. After the board issues its ruling on just compensation, either party can appeal the board's decision to the Superior Court if they are unsatisfied. Anytime after this hearing or before design approval, all information in support of this hearing is available at the department's headquarters in Concord for your inspection and copying. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. Following this public hearing, a transcript will be prepared to include all the testimony that is heard tonight as well as any written statements received during the comment period leading up to this hearing. We will be posting information and the plan from tonight's meeting on the project's website. Please check the website for other links to project documents that will be posted as the design progresses. Immediately following the public, oh, excuse me. Immediately following this public hearing, the department will evaluate the complete testimony from tonight and make recommendations on how those requests and issues can or cannot be addressed. These recommendations will be presented to the Hearing Commission. The Hearing Commission will judge the sufficiency of the department's resolution of hearing issues and decide on the necessity for the project. If there is support for the proposal and the commission finds in favor of the layout, we will complete the environmental approval that Rebecca Martin spoke of and move into final design. Final design includes development of detailed contract plans, acquisition of property as needed, environmental permitting, then advertising the project for contractors to bid on. We anticipate the contract to be ready to advertise for construction in the summer of 2024. This will allow for construction in the summers of 2025 and 2026 with utility relocations happening in 2024. The department's current 10-year plan has the preliminary cost estimate for construction to be approximately $1.35 million. We are still early in design, so this could change as the construction plans are finalized. Funding for this project will be 100% federal funds. We currently do not anticipate any town funds will be required. Counselor Stevens? This concludes the department's formal presentation for the proposed improvements to the intersection of New Hampshire Route 108, Amesbury Road, and Maple Avenue in the town of Newton. I would like to thank all of you for your time this evening. At this time, I formally request Counselor Stevens, the commission find in favor of the necessity for the layout of the project as presented here this evening. Thank you for your consideration. With that, I turn the meeting back to Counselor Stevens.
Thank you, Timothy and the entire DOT team. I will open this hearing for testimony. Before we begin hearing comments, concerns, or questions from the public, I would like to know if we have any elected officials with us this evening who would like to be heard at this point. Now I will open the meeting to anyone else wishing to speak. When your name is called, state your name and address and make your statements. I have four folks ready to go. So Steve Saraki? Saroski, thank you.
I am Lot 1, I'm at the corner.
Oh, please come up.
Steve Saroski, I'm the corner, the corner of Golds Hill and Amesbury Road, Lot 1 on your plan. I have a wellhead that exists in the corner by the easement. And I guess my concern is regarding what the impact will be on that as, from a standpoint of, one, it's in the easement, and two, just the ongoing concern with the construction during that time.
So Steve, thank you for your concern. I guess I just want to clarify, unless your wells have moved, we don't believe they're within the easement. We are showing an easement that's conservative right now that bots onto your parcel. But I believe it's outside. Is that, is that the same as you're seeing on the hearing handout there?
Correct. Well, I mean, it's not that it's out, but it is, or it's not.
Gotcha.
My wellhead is within about 10 feet.
It's certainly close, I'll give you that. We aren't anticipating that that will cause any concerns, but we are aware of it. We've got two wells, actually, that our survey has picked up. That's your active well and then a more. Not in use. You'll have to help me out here. Which one is closer to the proposed work?
The towed well is the one that's closest. It's right on the problem line.
Yep.
The drilled well is about 2 feet away from it.
Okay.
It's right there next to me.
No, but certainly your concerns are noted. I don't think it will be an issue, but we are aware of it, that your well is close to that proposed work.
Ballot? Mr. Sarachi, water quality at your wells. When were your wells most recently tested?
That's a very good question. Certainly, it looked when we acquired the property, about seven or eight years ago.
Okay. You know, PFAS is a great concern of mine and it's throughout the district. So there are resources with the Department of Environmental Services that we can discuss after the meeting. But it is a concern. The council approves many contracts to replace wells. So thanks for your question.
They say it's wrong.
Okay, thank you. Tim Bloomberg?
Yeah, I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joe Simone?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. John Brockwell? Thank you.
First of all, appreciate the presentation, very good presentation. I know, so you mentioned back in, I listened to the virtual public hearing, last, was it last year, last August?
2020.
2020, yeah. Time flies.
I recall at that time that you talked about an alternative for a roundabout. And I'm just curious if somebody could speak to the decision-making process that went into selecting the four-way stop versus the roundabout? Just seems that considering, was it 4,400 vehicles on 108, 33,000 some odd on Amesbury Road, that there might be some more consideration for an option that wouldn't stop all those vehicles every time, every day. Can someone speak to, like, the decision that went in?
Yep, I can speak to that. This project was a town-driven project. And after the public informational meeting at the town select board meeting, they discussed it and amongst themselves recommended a four-way stop sign and sent a letter to the department. And that's why we pursued the four-way stop sign.
Mr. Melvin, you're on the select board. Can you speak to, like, what the decision?
He's exactly right. We had, we had a meeting and we decided that a four-way stop would be the best thing.
Based on, on what? I'm just curious, like, what, what your considerations were?
Well, I think it's basically on the land taking that we might have to take to do a roundabout. You'd need a lot more land to do that. And the other thing was money. We was trying to keep the cost down.
If the project costs more, would the federal funds not cover it?
Well, a roundabout's more money.
Oh, certainly, I agree.
Yeah, a lot more money. And it would have been a lot more land taken in as well.
You mentioned not real, not, Mr. Weber mentioned not a real concern about queuing or anything. Like, do you have statistics on what the queue might be, what the delay might be?
Yep, so our traffic modeling relies on federal highway capacity calculations. So we're looking at, today on Amesbury, we predict about four cars for the worst-case scenario. And then looking at the post-condition, we see at most, I think it's New Hampshire 108 West, we have it predicted at about three cars worth of queuing. So no one's arriving at the intersection needing to wait all that long from our model. We also evaluate based off level of service, how the intersection functions today. The 108 leg is an A, there's a grade system there. We are seeing that come down to a B on the 108 approaches, but we still consider that acceptable.
I mean, a free-flow movement's always going to give you an A level of service.
Yeah, good.
With respect to environmental impacts and such, you mentioned, I think, a little over 6,000 square feet of wetland, that's permanent wetland impacts?
That's the combined temporary and permanent wetland impacts.
Is most of that, I presume, that southeast corner where that, that swale's going?
I actually, that's some, and then Hans, most of that's actually with the culvert, right? The wetland impacts.
So incidentally, the treatment swale, our goal was to try and avoid having any wetland impacts if we could. So most of our wetland impacts actually come from the southwest and southeast quadrants, just our slope fills as we widen the roadway to 11-foot travel lanes and five-foot shoulders to be more consistent with the tipicals that we construct elsewhere in the state. That does just push out that slope work a little bit. We have steepened some of those slopes. So we have, I think, a two-to-one slope where our worst impacts were proposed in order to rein in those impacts. So whereas normally we would look to design a four-to-one slope and avoid the need for guard rail, we have included guard rail and steepened the slopes to two-to-one in order to mitigate those impacts. And then beyond that, there is the area of the culvert, and that's where some of the impacts are coming from as well.
Where the swale is, just, you mentioned, like, tree impacts. Now, off the top of my head, I don't recall how wooded that area, that corner is.
Yep.
Is it, do you have a rough idea of the number of trees or the area of trees?
As far as acreage of clearing, I.
I'm just, oh, so I guess what I'm getting at is, it seemed like the swale's quite a ways off of Maple. I'm wondering why it wasn't tucked a little closer to Maple?
So it's about as close as we could get it. You'll notice at the plan, it's a little hard to see from a distance, that the swale starts actually today where the Maple Road slip ramp is. So half of it is really where there's already developed space. But then as we get further down the road, from a grade standpoint, in order to get the length of need, we needed about 100 linear feet in order to treat the water that we're expecting to travel to that location. So that did require us to continue off into the wood line a little bit. So paring back the tree line, but, you know, trying to, again, stay away from the wetland and reduce the clearing and impacts as much as we could.
So tucking it in would reduce those wetland impacts, you think, basically? That's kind of the conclusion you're making?
We, what's up there today is pretty conservative. I tucked that in about as tight as I felt I could get it while keeping it away from the roadway.
Other question? Sorry for this many questions. Have you guys looked at the condition of the culvert on 108? It's just beyond the project limit?
Yep, so speaking with our highway maintenance crews, that was slip line in the 90s. So out there today, the original pipe, I believe, was concrete. And now it has a plastic liner on the inside, and it's still in good shape. It's also seen some head wall repair over the years. So it is outside of our project limits. The goal is not to touch it as part of this project based off of our district maintenance recommendation.
So you mentioned that dam is privately owned, which, I'm curious, I didn't know that, but. Is there any control over the release from that dam? And is there consideration in the sizing of the culvert for if that property owner decides to release more or less than in particular?
Yeah, so I'm not a, the hydraulic expert. We do have some people in-house that have looked at it. The Department of Environmental Services has a dam bureau that actually investigates all dams in the state, including privately-owned ones. So they provided us a dam breach analysis, a worst-case scenario of if that thing were to fail, what would our downstream conditions be? And that's actually what we use to help guide our sizing of the pipe downstream in Amesbury. So that won't necessarily address the 108 culvert on the western leg. But that is a SAG condition. So roadway overtopping there would just flood into that wetland area where we think it could be accommodated then by the downstream condition.
Last question, hopefully. The, so there's an existing beacon out there, flashing beacon. Is there consideration for replacing that or replicating it in the proposed design or?
Nope, so that's actually something I'm realizing I left out of the presentation. We did run signal warrants for the location, recognizing a beacon's a little bit of a different. different beast, but signal warrants, traffic volumes out there today and looking out 20 years to our design year, did not meet signal warrants, which is why that is not the proposed improvement. We instead went with just the signage approach of the four-way stop. The beacon is not something that we're looking to install or reinstall in this instance, and it would not really benefit at that rate. The all-way stop, the beacon would just be flashing red for all approaches, whereas today it's flashing yellow on 108 and flashing red on Maple Avenue and Amesbury Road. So it will be removed as part of the project. Thank you.
Can I comment on your comment or your concern about the rotary?
Yeah.
I'm not from Newton, so I don't really have a, if you will, a dog in his hunt for this area. But with the amount of flow coming down 108 in the north-south condition, heading south on, and I'm sure at the opposite time of day, heading north on Amesbury Road, what would happen is that traffic would control the rotary. And anybody approaching from 108 west or Maple Ave from the east would actually be boxed out. This normally occurs, I know, I go through the Lee traffic circle on a fairly regular basis, when the, and other people in the audience are shaking their head, yeah, when you see 125 gets heavy, anybody wanting to go Route 4 to try and cross the Lee circle is boxed out. You go over to Rye, New Hampshire, has a very small roundabout where Route 1B and Sagamore Road is. The beach traffic controls it, and what happens is the other people are approaching, while they'd hope everybody would slow down and flow through, they're actually intimidated by the people coming from the majority flow, and it's like, it's worse than Russian roulette. You don't want to take the chance. You look at that and say, that guy's going to fly through that circle. So you just sit there. And when you sit there, it just backs up and backs up and backs up. So from an opportunity perspective, I think the town is better off with a four-way stop at this intersection than anything else.
He spoke to, I think he said, 4,000 vehicles a day on the westerly leg, 4,400 on the northerly, 3,800 on the southerly, which is pretty balanced. I'm sure Maple Ave is much less, I don't know.
Thousand, about?
Yeah.
What did you say?
A thousand.
A thousand, yeah, so people on Maple Ave maybe, to some degree, to your point.
But there's times a day you'd get very, very frustrated from, as a commuter, that you couldn't safely get through that intersection. And they become very problematic for new drivers who are faced with making decisions and elderly drivers who are the ones that are really intimidated by coming through those intersections. So just some other thought or other perspective as to why the department. And to be honest with you, I always saw this plan a week and a half ago. That's, I'm invited in, if you will, to be a sounding board. Thank you.
Any other members in the public wishing to speak?
I just had one comment. The Brook?
Please come, yeah, just a second.
I believe the Brook that you guys are stating is unnamed as Yumme Brook. H-U-M-M-E Brook is the name of that Brook that I've seen traditionally on past maps and reference. I only know it because I'm the abutter to it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Christopher George, I'm one Amesbury Road, so I'm just off the plan. So I would question the environmental impact of the noise situation on Amesbury Road and additional noise that will be created on 108 on North Main. So right now, one of the problems we have is there's a gravel pit right over the border on the Mass side, and they use 108 to get through to 125. 108 has become a cross-through to get to Haverhill from southern New Hampshire, from Exeter. They come over from Seabrook on 107. It's a great little pass-through. Lot of exhaust braking going on, especially right now, just to trim off a little speed to take that corner at Rose Corner on 108. What happens when they're coming to complete stops? Now, 30 miles per hour might be the speed limit. I think I could ask the officer-in-tennis that he's pretty certain that these trucks are going way over 30 when they're coming down 108. It's in nodding heads. So there's going to be a lot of exhaust braking. Right now, they're just doing it to trim off speed. That's not terrible. When they're doing it to come to a complete stop, it's going to have more noise. Okay? I worked in the military, I was in transportation for 25 years. I know all exhaust brakes, maybe some signage, you know, no use of exhaust braking, which would make them bleed off speed with their brakes before they, you know, as they're coming up that hill towards Rose Corner on 108, something along those lines, and they'd be on the Amesbury Road side, maybe on all four sides, just to, you know, because we are a pass-through now. This is what's happening. They're using our town to get around, which is okay. That's going to happen. It's a state road, no problem. But the noise created in the summer when the windows are open is horrible. You can't enjoy yourself in your own home because you're [makes noise] all day long. It's atrocious. So if anything could be done to mitigate that, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mike Povero, number six Maple Ave, and current road agent in town. Just for a point of interest for you guys, you were talking about wells a few minutes ago. When you did your existing condition, did you notice the well that's on the south?
Of Maple Avenue?
Yeah.
And it services parcel five, Wendy Witty?
Yeah.
Yep.
That, I think, is an active well that feeds Woody's house.
It is. So this came up at the public informational a few years ago. It's outside of our proposed work area right now, but we are aware of it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you didn't do a drainage swale that somehow impacted that well.
Yep, so I welcome everyone to come to the plan after the meeting if they want to talk and look at it in greater detail, but we do have those things demarcated so you can see where it is relative to the proposed work.
Just want to make sure you're aware of it.
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. The other question is lighting. You brought up the lighting. In your presentation, you said the town would be responsible for the lighting?
Yep.
If we were to maintain that? Is it not the DOT's somewhat responsibility to light a major intersection like that? Because if the town, and I can't speak for the selectmen in town, were to choose not to light that intersection anymore, that would become a safety issue. As that gentleman just said, right now, there's a beacon there that you can see for 500 feet coming each way. That's going to go away. I would recommend strongly that the DOT lights that intersection. Comments? No? Taking another advisement, I guess?
Yeah, I think that's a great comment. It's something we're going to need to look a little bit more in.
Yeah, not to throw it back on the town's responsibility to light that major intersection?
Yeah.
Okay. The other one is, it's going to be a closed system, drainage system?
Yep.
Is the DOT going to be responsible for testing that under MS4? Or is that going to fall under, and I hope you say yes, under the responsibility of the town?
I don't know. Rebecca, can you speak to that?
So currently, the project area is less than one acre in size within the MS4 area, so we aren't anticipating that this closed drainage system would fall under the MS4 permit.
But doesn't MS4 testing say that every closed-loop system at the outfall has to be tested?
So our water quality program manager said that it has to be, it has to capture one acre or more into a particular drainage point in order for it to fall under the MS4, but I will definitely bring your comments back to it.
If you would. It's just one more drainage outlet that I don't have to be responsible for testing. Thank you. And then the last one, on the drawing, it does not show, and it might be just simplicity on your drawings, does not show a stop sign on Pond Street, and it does not show a stop sign on Gould Hill.
Yep. I guess as far as existing details shown on the plan, yes, those are stop conditions. They were not illustrated clearly, so that's on us.
Okay, you guys will put stop signs in both of those locations?
Yes, yep.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. Do the members of the commission have any questions for the department of transportation at this time?
I don't. I think it's pretty welcoming.
Yeah, I'm all set.
My only question would be, with the alternative plan, the elimination of slipways, how will this impact non-motorized traffic?
Yep. So with the elimination of the slip ramps, that will lead to less confusion at the intersection and make it more easily traversable by all users.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. So I know you had mentioned that there wasn't, you know, noise studied on, or the noise on the corner is excessive. My name is Mike D'Esso. I live at lot four right now. So I just was wondering if there was anything, you know, as far as what would mitigate any sort of noise that would continue there? Although I know you decided on a four-way stop, you know, the residents certainly weren't consulted on what they thought the best option was going to be. As looking through it from the context of the noise, the stop sign on Amesbury Road is far worse than the curve coming down when it comes to not just vehicles but motorcycles, and it's, it's not particularly pleasant in the summer, as one of the gentlemen mentioned. So, you know, I just hope that, you know, maybe there's some more information as far as what that noise currently is and what it, the study says the potential would be that I could get my hands on. Anything on that?
Might defer to you, Rebecca. I know you spoke with John Evans a little bit about this.
Yeah, so I spoke with our noise program manager, and the long story short is the DOT's noise policy is available on our website. And what our noise policy says is that unless it's a type-one project, there isn't any noise mitigation that the department can do. So appreciate you mentioning your concerns and happy to discuss more and talk about the noise policy.
The stop signs will may get worse, so. So on the drawings, there's no locations for the new poles. Do we know where that's going to be as far as where it's going to land upwards on the properties?
Nope, so coordination's ongoing with the utility companies, particularly after the public hearing. They're going to provide us with their relocations in, you know, their final locations, but everything will be within the right-of-way, so nothing's going to come onto your, onto your property.
Fair enough. So right now, there's stop signs? What does it take for one day there to be stoplights, right? I kind of, I'm just wondering, you know, is that the next step? Like, is this, what type of traffic increase would that be the next part of the conversation? Do we know?
Volumes would need to get quite a bit higher.
Okay.
To meet signal warrants, so.
You should be responsible for it. Fair enough.
That's the easiest answer.
Yep. So crossing that area anywhere is treacherous. The property that I'm on is becoming an extremely high-traffic area just straight across my front yard, like, right across the corner. Does this process or does this plan improve crossing the road in any way, first and foremost for safety, and second, to kind of keep the traffic on people's property down?
So to be clear, are you asking about from a pedestrian standpoint, the ability to cross safely, or?
Yeah, I mean, you cannot cross this road. So not just me, like, and my family, but it's treacherous anywhere, basically, from the store to the, to the culvert. It's pretty, it's not, it's not a safe way. Is there any sort of crosswalks or any plan to be able to make it so that there's a little bit, it's a little bit safer to cross the road?
I guess the two things I would say to that end, the stop condition will bring everyone that's currently able to travel through on the 108 movements to a complete stop. You should see those speeds be reduced, provided people are obeying the signs that we have out there. The five-foot shoulder offers a little bit more refuge on the side of the road, so as you wait, maybe a couple feet off the travelway, looking for safe opportunities to cross, you know, you have a bit more pavement that you can work with. And then, lastly, and I hope I didn't lose it, something I didn't touch on in the presentation, we are including a bit of a grassed panel on the northwest quadrant that could be, you could see sidewalks installed as a future town project, so.
I know it's a touchy subject, especially in New Hampshire, but to keep people off of the properties would be ideal as a property owner, but, I mean, it is just not a, there's no way to navigate this corner on foot, on bike, on scooter, unless you go on people's yards, so. Just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, no, duly noticed. Thank you. If I might, Hans had mentioned the five-foot shoulders will give people more of a place on the side of the road to traverse, and with eliminating the slip ramps, by pulling in the pavement, there'll be more space between the road and the right-of-way for people to occupy.
Good, all right. Sounds good. Thank you guys for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your questions. Gary Rockwell?
I wanted to address a couple of things here. When I first heard about this, there was going to be a rotary, which I thought was a good idea, considering that you almost have a rotary there now with the, you called them pork chops?
Yep, the pork chop islands and the slip ramps.
So it's almost there as it is. Maybe it has to be a little bit bigger in diameter, but my other concern with a four-way stop is noise and emissions from vehicles that have to stop and wait. Most of the traffic at that intersection is 108, and it's, there are a fair amount of trucks that go through there. So all of those trucks are going to have to stop and start again at that intersection. And it, to me, it seems to make sense to keep those things moving rather than having them stop and spew gas and wait. So that becomes a noise issue as well as emissions. So that's one thing I had, which I guess ties in with my third one. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, you have my driveway apron shown as gravel, and the reason is probably because I had to add some crushed stone there because the state keeps paving 108, and now there's a six-inch difference between my driveway, paved driveway, and 108. And I've asked the state to fix that in the past, and they said, no, too bad, it's your problem, so.
Can you remind me, sorry, which parcel you are?
I'm sorry?
Which parcel you are? Could you remind me?
I'm the left there with the, by the pond.
Okay, yep.
Where you have gravel driveway.
Gotcha. But yeah, you're saying it's pavement underneath a layer of gravel. Gotcha.
And the other comment I just had to make was that we are not surrounded by Plastal. You have Maple Avenue going to Plastal, and you have, you have Plastal in both directions.
It's an error in the hearing handout. I caught it too late.
Just a comment.
But it is updated on the plans posted on the website, but thank you.
And so are there any environmental studies done on idling vehicles and stop-and-go traffic? Is that considered in your studies?
Yep, so we do have a noise and an air program manager who did evaluate the project alternative that was selected. It's included in the environmental document. I'd be happy, we have copies here. Be happy to give you one.
Okay, I'm just curious if you consider that?
Yes, yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your question. Anyone else in the public which would like to speak? So and just a reminder, comments will be accepted until January 29. That information is up there. So at this point, motion to adjourn. This meeting is now adjourned at 7:10 PM. Thank you all for attending. Good night.